First time is roll call.
Alderman Bannan.
President.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Next time the invocation led by Chris Allen, the Valley Baptist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman Bannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful for this group of concerned citizens, thankful for these folks that have given up their time and their effort and their energy to be able to serve this city and the citizens thereof. And so, Lord, we pray tonight, as the meeting progresses, that things will be done with wisdom and that things will be done with honor and integrity and honesty and that every issue that comes up would be addressed with dignity for those that are participating and respect for all parties concerned. Lord, I pray that you would grant a special blessing of wisdom to the decision makers of our city to make sure that they act in accordance with what you believe to be the best for us. Lord, we love you. We pray to sing tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please show me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next time is approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
No changes and see no proclamations, we'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask the citizens who wish to address the board, come forward to the podium and microphone, and please give your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing them, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I vote for Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Drive a second. Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Next item, under previous business, we have National League of Cities Service Line Program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is an item that came up at the previous board meeting. If you recall, we had a presentation from the National League's, National League of Cities Service Line Group. He asked that evening if the board would take a vote for a resolution of support for the program. I just thought that probably better if you guys had the time to think about it and review any information. If there's any additional questions, we can get in touch with him and ask him. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion to support that program, to draft a resolution of support for the program. Obviously, this is just all according to what the board wants.
And I had mentioned this to you, are they a, I guess, known visitor that offers this? I've known in the past, we've had people go door to door, send mailers, and they'll contact us saying, hey, is this something that's backed by the city? So I don't know if this is the same company or if there's other companies that are doing this.
We don't know that it's the same company that has been doing it in the past.
Yeah, I don't believe this to me, but, you know.
But this is not, so this company is not the only one out there that provides this service. The problem is, is that fraud occurs so frequently in a business such as this where they're taking care of service line. There's disputes between the city and the contractor of who's responsible for what, which is why National League of Cities put the program together and then got the local, state municipal leagues to support it. I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's very unusual to see something, somebody like MML support a program like this. But if that's because it's administered through the National League of Cities and they have put their stamp of approval on it. So really, the idea with a program like this is that it's more to protect the residents against fraud than it is to try and step into the private sector and tell them which direction to go.
Questions or comments regarding it?
So you're looking for a...
I do, I'm sorry. Maybe just a couple of thoughts and maybe a couple of questions. Initially, I have to say, it sounded almost too good to be true, you know, totally voluntary, right? They can get in the program when they want, they can get out of the program when they want. All that is still part of what we would be endorsing by our action here, right? Is the city connected to that organization or is there any liability if a service that's provided isn't maybe handled quite correctly or possibly creates an ongoing problem for a homeowner in any way?
There's no liability inherently just by us endorsing it. I think that the city's protected from that perspective because we're not entering into a, you know, a joint venture with this company whether we're endorsing it. As, you know, the city's reviewed and it's passed the tests.
Gotcha. That's about it.
Can they get into computers? The reason I'm worried, somebody got into Blue Springs Medical Building and people that were patients there, they got all of their information. Guess these are one of the blessed people that they got.
Yeah, there won't be any connection with our network between, yeah, between the National League of Cities Program and the city. I mean, the only correspondence actually that occurs would just be typical email correspondence that we have. And then we would send them the template for the letter that's going to be sent out, but they wouldn't have absolutely zero access to our network.
So for my shooting directions.
Yeah, just need to know if you'd like to direct a resolution for it.
Not edit this, is something that we want to put on a future agenda? Does anybody want to add a post to it?
That would be a yes vote to support it.
For a resolution next meeting.
Very good. Alright.
Alright.
No additional previous business, move on to new business. We have social media policy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, we have been working on a social media policy. I say we, Sarah has been, and so I would like her to come up. And she's just going to give you a review of the policy that's been provided to you in writing this evening.
Hello, everybody. I've never done this right here, so can everybody hear me? Okay. So I've been, through some of the meetings I've been to, and there's actually an organization in Kansas City that I attend monthly meetings. As I started with position, I kept hearing social media policy. And it's just very commonplace with municipalities, somewhat of a protection. A, so that the things that are put on our social media, that's Facebook, Twitter, could be YouTube, they're things that we support or things that represent the kind of communication that we want put out there. Because not only am I putting things on Facebook or our police department, we have two or three administrators that also share information there. We have community members that comment. And so, part of this addresses, and actually it's more of our external use, I start off with internal use and I'll go back to that. But the external use being when somebody comments on an event and it has nothing to do with that event and it's very negative and sometimes even uses foul language, I have the right to take that off of there. And that's very common, that's not unusual. But we want this to be put out there as a safeguard so somebody doesn't come back and say, am I freedom of speech is inhibited? That's not what we're doing, we're just trying to, you know, we want people to get on our Facebook pages to be informed and to learn about the great events that we do, the fun stuff, and also occasionally police events and things that are happening. But we try to keep, there's going to be negative comments, I'm not taking off every negative comment, but when it's outlandish or has nothing to do with what was being presented, that's just kind of one of, that's one finite example of what the social media protects, is the fact that we can take that off. I will hold record of anything that's deleted off of our social media, along with the poster's name, comment, just so we can go back and reference that should we need to. The internal use has to do more with how we're using Facebook, how we're using these sites. We try to link or point people in the direction of our website when we can. Also has to do internally with what city employees are doing on social media. We don't want somebody who works for the police department, or public works, or any department, going on Facebook and saying negative things about our city, our community, our staff, or anything like that. So we're just trying to, we're not saying you can't have me on Facebook, what we're saying is the city employee, you have a certain standard to uphold when you are on Facebook. So all of this is, is a policy that I will utilize, I'd like to put forth on the city's website as well as social media at times, like a reminder, hey, here's our, here's what we want to happen on social media and this is why we have it out there for you. So I hope that was clear. Does anybody have any specific questions about the social media policy?
You'll still call me and send me a note?
I'm sorry.
You'll still call me and send me a note?
Yes, ma'am, you'll still get things in print when I see it, absolutely.
Sarah, was this set, is this the first time that the board's seen it tonight?
Yes.
So probably what we'd suggest is just if you guys take this and review it, if you have any questions, get back with staff. This is an in-house policy, typically with an in-house policy, I would just enact it, sign it, but since it is related to the board and it sets guidelines for the Board of Alderman as well, we obviously want your approval on this. So please, you know, like I said, take it with you, review it, and then any questions, feel free to reach out to myself, Ken, or Sarah. And we can clarify any of it and we'll revisit it for your approval at the future board, at the next board meeting.
Does this, you say you intended me for sending questions or managing social media, that sort of thing? Is this general boy looks like the other cities have an option as well?
Yes, I mean, I researched and, you know, kind of, as what I have found with a lot of documents with the municipalities, you kind of end up in tuck and take things from other municipalities. And I took into consideration the size of cities I was looking at and the kind of communities that they were. And definitely, I looked at several others, some of them were Independence, Blue Springs nearby, and I looked, not nationwide, but I kind of, I wanted to look for communities that are, like I said, similar to what we have here. And I definitely referenced and utilized a lot of the same components. Any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no additional new business, presentations, or public hearings, we'll move on to ordinances.
Honored the first ordinance is Bill B-1811, second reading. It will be ordinance 2438, and it is an ordinance changing the zoning for certain land in Green Valley from downtown Beverly Lake District, transition zone to M1 light industrial. Second reading, ordinance 2438.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 18-11 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2438.
I have motion from Alderman Headley to accept Bill B-18-11 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2438. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman West. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this rezoning ordinance has actually had two separate public hearings. One before the planning and zoning, then one before the Board of Alderman at the last meeting. As Mr. Cook said, this is for the second reading. If there's any specific questions, Mr. Murphy can answer.
Any questions?
For those in the audience, why don't you tell them the location of this, some that haven't been here before?
So if you're not familiar, it's the land directly to the east of the Casey's and O'Reilly, off of Buckner Tarzney and Old Double A. So it's the vacant land in between that and the mini storage. So it's a kind of a floodplain area, a large majority of it, but the part that is buildable seems to fit with the M1 light industrial use.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Bannan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Strattan?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Next bill, first reading, it's Bill B-18-12, an ordinance amending Chapter 115, Officers and Employees, Section 115.030, Section 115.100, Section 115.200. Code of ordinances, City Green Valley, Missouri, first reading, Bill B-18-12.
I move that we accept Bill B-18-12 for the first reading and bring it back for the second reading, title only.
I have motion from Alderman Totten to approve Bill B-18-12 for its first reading, bringing it back by title for its second reading. Drive a second.
Second. Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as you will recall, we've had discussion about the residency requirements for city employees. This specifically relates to city administrator, the city clerk, and the chief of police. After the discussion that we had, we're bringing forward this ordinance, which has made some changes to Chapter 115. And I'll just quickly go over them. We're going to have to do a larger rewrite of the officers section just because I'm not real pleased with, I shouldn't say pleased, it's not really clear, some of the responsibilities. There's a lot of authority that's delegated to the city administrator in the ordinance, but then it's, it still has a city collector that would be elected by the public or by the Board of Alderman. So there's some cleanup. Reference this evening's ordinance. What we did in this is that we changed the city administrator, took it out of the qualifications to be a resident completely, so that that's not set by ordinance. And instead of putting that in there, we just changed it to that the city administrator shall establish appropriate residence as outlined in the respective employment agreement. So that gives the board the authority anytime that they negotiate with the city administrator to require residents, if they want to, in that particular cause, or to set certain boundaries for that employee. As with the police chief and the city clerk, the recommendation, and what we spoke about last time, was that we set a radius instead of a response time, we set a radius. And so, we provided an exhibit in your E-Pak that shows a 10-mile radius, 20-mile radius, and a 30-mile radius, and just kind of highlighting where that falls. And keeping in mind, again, this is for the police chief, for the chief of police and for the city clerk. 10 miles doesn't even get us to Independence or Odessa, so that's a very, very small radius. If you go out to 20 miles, you're able to hit the edge of places like Lexington, which Liberty, not quite to the heart of Kansas City, but it gets a little bit closer. And then the 30-mile radius reaches over into Johnson County, Kansas, you have Overland Park, Excelsior Springs, Richmond. It does take in all of Lexington, Higginsville, Holden. So it's much more, it gives us a much larger pool to select those employees. So with that, really, the information that I need from the board tonight is if there is a specific radius that we can plug in. Because as you'll see in the ordinance, we left it blank for the board's consideration tonight. We will go ahead and get a first, we'll get the vote on it tonight, and then we'll bring it back for the second read with the miles fixed in there as a permanent part of the ordinance.
How's everyone still on the miles?
In the context of a response time tied to the miles, it occurs to me that clear up north of Lawson or clear up north of the airport would be a bit excessive.
I think 30 is probably too far.
Right, I agree with that.
Especially when you throw in 30 minutes towards the city versus 30 minutes away from the city, it just seems...
Yeah, so, I think 10 is kind of tying us in. I thought Liberty's a little bit further than what I was thinking. And this is from the 20, I feel like 12 and a half. Oh, excuse me, I mean, we think, I mean, if we're sticking with that, I think 20 is probably the best, but even then, I'm, I guess I don't think of Liberty being within 20 because it takes a little while to get there, I mean, that's...
Yeah, that's specifically, just as a crow flies radius.
I'm just curious, I don't know, is 15 is...
Would our police chief have the ability to come from those distances with lights and sirens? Or does that only work once?
How would that work, chief? Say our chief lived in Liberty and there's an emergency they need to get to town for, would they be able to run code from Liberty? Is everyone comfortable with the 20 then, or do we want to go smaller than that?
20, huh?
20, alright. Who do you make a motion and make that 20?
No, I'll just, I'll go ahead and write it in there, and with it being reflected in the record, we'll bring it back for the second vote as part of it. So I can just go ahead and vote on the ordinance.
Any discussions, questions there?
So we will go with the 20. All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Six zero on the first reading, Mayor. Next ordinance is Bill 18-13, first reading, an ordinance amended Chapter 220, fireworks, Section 220.030, 220.060, Section 220.90. Code of ordinances, City Green Valley, Missouri, first reading, Bill B-18-13.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B-18-13 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Stratton to approve Bill B-18-13 for its first reading, bringing it back by title for its second reading. Drive a second.
Second. Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion?
What is the final on this, when they can sell on that?
How about I tell you, how's that?
I don't think it's a good idea because some people out here don't know.
That's just what I'm going to do. So in section, there's two different sections that we're dealing with here. Section 220 dot 060, I'm going to go in reverse order because one substantiates the other. Signs required. It talks about the signs being put up within a fireworks tent, any place that sells fireworks within city limits. They're going to have to include at least four signs that has our discharge dates, and they'll also be given a copy as a flyer to take home that has the dates and the times that they, they're permitted to shoot off. Section 220 dot 090 is discharge and when they can discharge that. As you all know, the discussion that we had is pretty convoluted as to the times and the dates, and they had a specific exception for the year 2013. So we went through and cleaned it up so that you are specifically allowed to shoot off fireworks in Green Valley from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the 3rd of July and the 4th of July. The only exception to that is that if the 3rd or the 4th of July falls on a Saturday, then we will allow three days, which would be the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. So you'd be able to shoot the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th if the 3rd or the 4th falls on a Saturday. With limiting fireworks to being shot off only as late as the 4th of July, we then went back to Section 220 dot 030, the period of sale is limited. And the only thing that we can change in this section is instead of July 5th, we changed the sale shall end on July 4th. So vendors will still be able to shoot, or they'll still be able to sell seven days prior to the 4th of July. They'll be required to shut down the sales at 11:00 p.m. on July 4th every year.
And just one, we had also discussed, that got left out by accident, the first Saturday of the month?
Okay.
If the 3rd or 4th did not fall on the weekend?
Okay, I missed it, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Is that something we're wanting, to give that Saturday date?
I remember that, and that's what we just said.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the first Saturday, you want to allow fireworks?
Yeah, so we just, it just seems to read the first Saturday of the month.
Okay.
I mean, that's all you can say really.
So what if the first Saturday is the 6th? That's going to be...
It would be confusing, but it allows it on the 6th.
Okay, so we would allow it, I'm just trying to think this through. So we would allow fireworks to be discharged on the 3rd and the 4th and the 6th. I think that's going to be more confusing to the public. And I'm sorry, I completely missed that in the discussion, I did not follow up on that. So I just want to make sure that when we bring this back to you, that it is correct, so...
I think our discussion about it was just so that like if we had a situation like this year, where it was on a Wednesday, so that there was still a weekend day available.
Right, yeah, I just, so do you want, so do you want, you would still prohibit fireworks, or fireworks to be shot off on the 5th in a scenario like that? If you had, Wednesday was the 3rd, Thursday was the 4th, then we would not allow on the 5th, but we would allow people to shoot it off on the 6th again? And does that, will that change anything for the sale?
I don't think it changes anything with sale, I think that's, I think selling's the same.
Okay. I would...
I mean, that's the only place, the only place that I remember the problem is the bomb on the 6th, right?
Yes, yes, sir. Or if the first, if the first Saturday is a first, because then you're going to have...
It'd still be the first Saturday though.
Right, but if it's the 1st of July, you would be able to shoot July 1st, then you wouldn't be able to shoot on the 2nd, then you'd have the 3rd and the 4th.
What about New Year's Eve?
Which I'm fine either way, I just want to make sure I have it accurate for...
What about New Year's Eve when there are a lot of shootings?
Oh, we're not, we're not, that muddy water is there.
Alright, that'd be his headache over there.
Except for on days like that, it's like they shoot one thing and that's it, so...
Okay, well, we can include the first Saturday, and I can just actually include it in the discharge section in 090 so that it would say in the years, it talks about, it can be shot off from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the 3rd and 4th of July each year. And somewhere in that section, I can include as well as the first Saturday of July.
Are the question marks around the first Saturday after the 4th?
Yeah, I don't recall that, that's why I'm, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it came out that it was basically still going to be three days, or it was going to be...
Yeah, because we're currently three days, so we're going to keep it at three days by doing that.
Okay, I thought, three days only came in if there was, if it fell on a Saturday, that was my... How about, let's do this, Mayor, Ken, we table this for this evening, and I will bring it back to you. Because I need to go back, I need to visit Teresa, and I need to visit about this. I need to look back at my notes, I'm still not completely clear, and rather than hash this out in public, I need some better direction as to if we're going to be skipping specific days in between the 3rd and the 4th and a weekend. I guess I'm just not following.
Yeah.
Unless somebody wants to make an amendment to it and actually state in the motion what we're changing.
When we got time, we're going to have to do it tonight. Make a motion to table.
Okay, motion. Alderman West needs to table B-18-13. Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion on a motion to table? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Alright, that's tabled.
I move to the ordinances for resolutions.
Alright, no resolutions then, next up is...
Alright, no resolutions then, next up is the insurance report?
Nothing to report, thank you for your.
Next up, the ministry of fire report?
Start with Mister Davies.
Uh, Mayor and Board, just real quick, we, uh, as you all know, at the end of June, we wrapped up our spring baseball and softball season. Pretty quick turnaround, where we're jumping into the fall youth baseball and softball season, and that, that registration for it actually kicked off, uh, this past Friday. So, early registering for the fall season, with, with practices kicking off in mid-August, games mid-September, and wrapped up by Halloween, so I just wanted to find out.
Alright, um, Mister Bowden.
Um, I just want to let the board and the mayor know that we have received our, um, July assessment from Jackson County, and compared to last year's July assessment, the assessed value went up five point four percent. And we'll be working on, um, bringing some information to you for the levy.
And then, um, Theresa.
Um, just to follow up on the email I sent last week, I believe, the Midwest Public Risk Annual Conference will be October fifteenth through seventeenth. We have two spots reserved for elected officials, so, um, if anyone has an interest in that, could you get with me after the meeting, please?
And last but not least, um, with the levy information, or the assessed valuation information that we have, we want to, uh, hold a special workshop for the board to discuss, um, the, all of our debt service, and how it is related to the assessed valuations, and kind of work through that whole process of setting the levy, uh, outside of the public hearing. So, we're proposing that August thirteenth, um, we hold a workshop before the meeting from six to seven PM. If we're able to do that, that gives us enough time to do a public hea- or, a, a notice of public hearing, which needs to be held on August twenty seventh. Uh, and then we could have the, uh, first read at the first meeting in September, and the second read, the second meeting in September, and have our levies, uh, submitted by Oc- October first, which is the deadline. So, as long as everybody is, uh, good with that, we'll put.
I may not be.
You may not be.
That may be my back to school night.
It's, I know it's true, because we had staff discussion about that.
It's a blue spring, too. Yeah, no, I won't, I'll leave that, leave the teacher alone.
Okay, do you want to reschedule it, or do you want us to hash through it, uh, in your absence?
I mean, whatever's best, I mean, if it's a timeline thing.
Yeah, if we don't do it on the thirteenth, we would have to probably do it some other time that week, just because we have to, we have to, uh, do public notice of our hearing, and in that hearing, we have to say what we're gonna recommend.
Yeah.
However you want me to do it.
Okay, so we can, we'll, we'll go ahead and preliminarily set it for August the thirteenth. Uh, Mayor, I'll get with you, and we'll work through all the information that we're gonna be going through that evening, that way I can get any input that you may have. Might actually, uh, if Alderman Bammers available, uh, the three of us can sit down, as Mayor pro ten, you can sit down, uh, with Mayor and I, and go through that discussion, that way if the Mayor has an opinion to represent that night, you can put it, give it to everyone, so. Um, the last thing that I have, is I just wanna hand this, uh, document out, we're gonna be issuing the RFP for the selection process for the, uh, Chief of Police, uh, recruitment. That's going to go out next Monday, as everyone knows, um, after Chief Starbucks' retirement, Chief Beal was, uh, appointed as the interim, uh, Police Chief. And, uh, the board wanted to have a public, uh, process recruitment, and so this is going to be the RFP that, that I send out, and it will be requesting proposals from firms that, that actually hold these types of recruitments. It's, uh, similar to what you would do with the city administrator position, um, or, you know, certain department head positions. I know that when I was hired as, as Public Works Director, um, we, we had a consultant that came in and went through this process. So, the timeline on this is to have it issued by July thirtieth, which is next Monday, and then we'll have the responses in by Friday, August seventeenth. Uh, that'll give us enough time, uh, at, at the staff level, to go through the responses, get it to the board for your review, and then hopefully, we can make a selection at the August twenty fourth meeting, or at the first meeting in September. So, that is all that I have this evening, Mister Mayor.
Next up, support of all of the reports and comments, Oliver Stratton.
Um, I do have a couple things, um, I just wanted to let the board know, the, um, at the park board meeting that took place on the seventeenth, um, they did have the public meeting, um, where there were representatives from Terrac Technologies was there, and also city staff. Um, there were approximately around twenty-five residents that, um, showed up for the meeting, there were several questions asked and answered. Um, we found where there were some weaknesses, and came to some resolutions. Um, it was also decided that Terrac Technologies will notify the city as to when the final spraying will take place, so that the city can notify the residents prior to the spraying, to be able to keep their children inside, their animals inside, so that there's, you know, no problems on that part. Um, and then, uh, also, the Valley News was there, and covered the story very well, I thought, so, I thought there are a lot of facts were put in that story, and it was on the front page of the paper, so you probably wanna read that as well. And that's all.
Oliver Totten?
Well, I'm gonna be saying thank you to a bunch of people in the city, because I got excited when I had a lady call me up and say, "We got a lot of police now, I've seen them more and more every day." And I said, "Well, we were four police officers short, we couldn't keep up with it now." And then, Public Works got kudos for last Sunday, when somebody tore down the stop sign, and street, the street sign in the wall at the Baptist Church. They were impressed with, of course, our, uh, Public Works guys, they had it all fixed within the next day, workday. And then, they had a, Public Works got another compliment, because they fixed the, uh, leak at the top of, uh, front street, and they did that in a hurry. So, I, I just enjoy hearing the praises that our city gets, I said, "Why don't you call them?" "Oh, you'll talk to them," that's their response, but it is nice to hear, instead of complaining. You know, the snow, when it's in the middle of the road, and they plow up the street, because the dummies didn't take the cars off of the road, and they're blocked in, I could hear that, too. But I like the good stuff. Thank you.
Oliver Coleman?
Chief, um, the last time I was here, you, we had the discussion about, uh, the speed hump, and I don't know where we, where we ended up on that, and I don't even know right this very second, but I'd like to bring it up again. I, I'm reading some things in our, um, neighborhood app, that people are still complaining about speeders in Rosewood Hills, but also about kids that are riding mini bikes, uh, and still, still driving the golf carts that are underage. So, if, if we could, I know that you're trying to get everything situative, but if there's any way that we could, eh, even have a, a meeting in Rosewood Hills, to address those concerns, or whatever we need to do to ease their frustrations, uh, I would, I would appreciate your help. And so, uh, that, that at this point in time is all I have, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Oliver Hudson?
Tim and Rick, can I have you guys contact, uh, MoDOT, or whoever needs to be contacted relative to, uh, stoplights out on, uh, Southern Tuxley and Duncan? I know several times this weekend, I was caught behind, uh, a line of cars, and there was, it seemed like the lights were exceptionally long, and, uh, there were times where I was literally going on there, and they were still exceptionally long, and that was both directions, um. So, anything you need to, have someone look at that, and maybe resolve it, that would be good. The other item is, um, the planning and zoning meeting, I believe the next step, or the step in the process is a second review, um, but there's gonna be some property, um, or, or a, uh, ordinance possibly brought up to us to change some zoning, if the planning and zoning's recommendation for some property by, uh, charter. So, I don't know if it'll make it that far, but in that case, just heads up.
Alright, Oliver West?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Oliver Bammers?
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Next up, the mayor's report, uh, the only thing I have is, I don't know what we wanna do about it, but, it's not ours, but I think it's kind of fallen onto us, is the traffic circle median. I noticed that it's got some really nice tall weeds in there now, and I don't, I mean, I don't know, moving forward, what we wanna do with it, or it's not actually the city, but I don't know who it actually is. Is it actually anybody's, ever figure out? Because it's not a homeowners association. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if we wanna clean it up, and then somehow, I mean, because it has that, one type of decorative grass in there, and that's fine weed, but it's, and I don't know how we stopped the weeds growing in there, because I mean, they're just growing up through the rocks right now. Maybe if we put more rock in there, it's, it's gonna find a way up through there.
Yeah, you could probably get some Roundup and spray it in there, something like that, just try to clean it up.
He told everybody they'll be out here complaining.
Oh, you guys, poor.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Me, too.
Fly in small now. I mean, yeah, if we wanna get it out, I mean, we at least could get those weeds knocked down in there, and it looks horrible, and then I don't know if there's more we wanna do to try and make it, no maintenance or not, I don't know.
I think, I think we can look at options to try and redo, I mean, I just drive by it all the time, and it just keeps looking worse and worse. I would, I would rather try to find some, you know, a little bit of funding to do something with it, that, that takes that maintenance out of it in the future.
Yeah, but still look.
If they're not an active HOA right there?
I mean, the people that, I mean, they have gotten volunteers, they have it before, and cleaned it up, but that's.
It'd be really nice.
That's hit miss, they had the fountain in there at one point, but that got to be in the lies, and there was no HOA to keep it up, and it looks like, you know, we'd like it to look nice, but at the same time, there's no HOA to maintain it, and then the biggest thing is that it's cleaning up the weeds and stuff that are in there, which shouldn't take very long to do.
The homeowners association owns the.
And if we can come up with some kind of plan to move forward, the.
Is that the one that the homeowners association owns? And they're not maintaining?
Well, there's not a homeowners association, no.
Home, okay, so then, who owns the property?
There was supposed to own it, but there's not, yeah.
So, technically now, owns the property?
There's no, there, there's no property ownership, is there? I mean, originally, it was split up between the parcels that existed surrounding it, um, but, and we've had this conversation, you know, over and over and over, do we wanna do it? I don't even know who we would force to do it at this point, but it's, to me, it becomes a point of, you know, that, that, it, it brings down the.
Value.
The value and the, the appeal of the city, and I mean, we, we work all the time to do beautification, clean up trash, that's everything, but let's not let this continue to exist at, at the largest.
Well, I heard some cities take over the maintenance of it, and after so long, it's to the cities, and then do with, because I don't wanna see a homeowners association come out and use it.
Mister Cook, if that nice foot happened, if we start taking care of it, it just kind of becomes ours, via, what is that, I mean?
Frankly, I've never researched adverse possession by the city, you cannot assert adverse possession against the city. Um, this is, this is similar to the problem you have up in Cross Creek, where it's, you can't, up north, with, with the alleyways. The chain of title ownership stops somewhere after the developer, after the initial dedication and acceptance. So, I'm just thinking out loud, we're gonna have to probably do some research, but if the association were supposed to have been in charge, then if we could identify the members of the current, the current members of the association, assuming there is one, or instead, the current owners, that would be members of the association of that subdivision. So, let's assume you're all owners, you would be in the association if there were one, you would have a claim to that piece of real property, by virtue of your membership in the association. So, cleanest, fastest, most expedient way would be to prepare a quitclaim deed, saying, everybody here quitclaims any interest they have in the traffic circle to the city. That eliminates it forever, so with the chain of title, when you sell your house, uh, the, the new owner can't come in and claim they own the traffic circle. It's very similar to the situation at Creekside, by the way.
And since we're on that situation. Get, well, first of all, is anybody having questions about the circle, then, so we'll clean it up, and see what we can do, okay?
First, first, how many peoples would you say are being, be involved in that process?
I believe there's four, I think there's only four members of the HOA, isn't that correct?
The others, is there anybody in that subdivision, I don't know.
It's only the four corners.
I think it's one, huh? Yeah, I think it's just the four that are around there.
Just the four, um.
It was, I guess, originally supposed to include, as you went down Cross Creek, and those other rooms, and they somehow did the end. But I think it was wrote down, Mister Cook and Mister Geary, too, that, actually, actually identifying the traffic circle, it's still, like, it was referenced, but didn't really define, and say. I mean, long story short, the original developer was the one taking care of it.
But we could.
And then it went away, and everybody.
Legally, we could probably approach, uh, Mister Ambrose, Mister Johnston, and.
Yeah, I think it would be no more than.
The other two corners, uh, I'm assuming, and David Ward still owns, or not, he owns. Identify the four property owners, and just approach them with it.
The, the one right across the street has sold, the other corner, well, not the house, uh, not the land, but that house, are you talking about like, the land owner, or the?
It's the land, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think it was two, the lots are. Well, in the meantime, we're trying to figure that out, let's just clean it up for now, and if they still get us through.
You were gonna talk about alleyways.
Mm-hmm.
You were gonna ask about the alleyways.
Yeah. The next one I have is the alleyways over in Creekside.
Yes.
I keep getting questions from over there, because the residents believe that they are the cities, and they want us to fix them. I keep telling them, as it stands right now, I don't know who owns them, I don't know if anybody owns them. But apparently, someone's the county's telling them that since it doesn't show up as anybody else's, that it's the cities, and we need to be fixing them.
It's not the cities.
Yeah.
I told, I told Ryan Deonarboth last week, or two, after I talked to Jonathan Zer, who represents the association, uh, that, I, and we talked about the same scenario, about cleaning up the chain of title, because. Chain of title stops with Sean Tebby, when he departed on the, on the note, and the bank took it over, I don't know what bank, the bank then started selling the property. There never was a conveyance, an acceptance, or a dedication by anybody, including the developer, to the city. So, there's no right of way, um, and, again, Jonathan, Jonathan Zer's a lawyer, and I told him that if we could get all of the homeowners to do exactly what I described, sign a quitclaim deed, transferring any right, title, and interest they would have in that parcel, and I, is it a couple blocks, Ken? Couple blocks long? Uh, I mean, there's. Four separate alleys?
Four different alleyways, yeah.
Yes, different, yeah.
Because the roads are short there. Whatever it is, um, that would clean up the title, but that's, that's procedurally how you do it. Whether or not the city wants to do that, and me in the business of maintaining those alleyways, that's another issue, because right now, it is no man's land. And, and, and I think that it also pertains to the pool, doesn't it? They have a similar issue with the ownership and maintenance of the pool, if I recall Jonathan's, am I right? So, they're struggling over there, they're telling me what to do.
Yeah, well, I know the HOA doesn't have the money to, to fix it out, that's why they're. Yeah. Well, I know the HOA doesn't have the money to, to fix the house. That's why they're wanting the city to take them.
They're thinking about a tier structure with multi-family versus single-family, and maybe the multi-family would pay a fee to use the pool. Not answering your question very well. I'm just telling you all I know.
Yeah. So, I guess, my question is, what does the board want to do regarding it? 'Cause they, I get a couple times a week, I'm getting somebody contacting me regarding it, and I keep telling them, "Right now, nobody owns them," and they think that, basically, what it comes down to is they feel that the city should be responsible, because we let the development go in, the development, developer bankrupted or whatever, and now we have these alleys that are in really rough shape, and they feel that the city should make them right.
Does one say have to allow the easement to the properties, uh, alongside where the alleys were? Because that's what I was told in, uh, one of my disputes, and that, uh, you know, and they put a stipulation that if in an emergency, uh, the one on left and seeing that railroad had to have the right to get through that property for, if they had an emergency, because there was no other way to do other than the street. So, I was, I mean, I'm under the impression that there has to be an easement, uh, on the properties on the road.
Well, no, they're wanting us to take ownership of them. They want us to take over. They, they, they don't want an easement. They just want the city to take it like it's a road, and, 'cause right now, we don't plow it, we don't fix potholes, we don't resurface them, because they would never give it to the city as roads.
Yeah, well, and they, and they weren't constructed that way. I mean, roads are, they're, they're private drive. It's a shared private drive.
Right.
For whoever's on that block.
They have a tremendous amount of work to do.
Yeah, I mean, they need to be totally reconstructed, all of them. But the homeowners want the city to take it and reconstruct them, because they don't have the funds to do it. And then basically, it would make them a mixed street or whatever. So, I'm just, you know, I keep telling people, I mean, I just want to be able to tell the people one way or the other, you know, the city doesn't have an interest in taking these, so you're gonna need to find another way, or yes, the city does have an interest in taking them and doing it. And then we're looking at putting them on the CIP and all that, so, uh, we've been kinda, this has been going on a while, as we've been trying to figure out who had the title and all that, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna like, you know, let people think I keep stringing them along, so.
I think just from staff's perspective, we would be opposed to, uh, adding that, just simply because, you know, we, we've already got, um, transportation system to take care of. The roads were never constructed to be any more than a private drive, and so like, like Mayor said, we would have to go in and reconstruct it. Well, I, I have a lot, a lot of roads that are on the overlay program.
And it would probably take up our entire CIP money next year to probably just do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, easily, and this would be to serve.
It's probably one of the reasons that they're in the condition that they are, is because they've got big trash trucks going back in there to get the trash.
And that's another, do we not, I guess there's issues with, well, there's issues with the parking and the trash back there, too, that they're wanting us to enforce. But I don't think we can enforce it, since it's not really the city's, right?
Well, and all of the, yes. So, the, I mean, the big issue with the one dumpster that was by the pool, where the single-family homes were coming and dumping trash there, when they're supposed to have their own trash service for each home. And so, I think the apartment people ended up taking that one away, just because it, there was no room in there.
Now, there's, I, I think there's issues now with people not bringing their trash cans in and stuff. They leave them in alley, and people can't drive through the alley, and and, and I get the people's frustration. I mean, you know, they, they bought these houses and back when they were first purchased, and they bought them with, you know, this grandeur, you know, what, what they were gonna have, and now they don't have what they thought they were getting.
Did they collect fees, HOA fees, for a period of time for which?
Well, then that's a whole nother issue, because the HOA, like twenty-eight of the houses are rentals, all owned by the same company in California, so he basically has all the teeth on the HOA, and he doesn't wanna pay into it or do anything, or... There's, I think, several lawsuits going on with the HOA, too, that they're dealing with. But their biggest thing to fuss is they wanna know if we're gonna do the alleys, and then if we can enforce trash can codes, things like that, on the alleys. I think people are parking on the alleys, lot, you know, and it's not really a city's street, so we can't go in there and enforce laws, really, can we?
The only ordinance that you can enforce are the ordinances that pertain to, to conditions on private property.
I don't think there are news, like, I just think they're parking, but when they park, I think they're bull, you know, making it difficult for people to get in and out there, but
Are they allowed to park? Are they allowed to park where they park? Is there anything prohibiting them?
Not from the city.
And the trash cans, are they placed where they're supposed to? Do we have a policy that says?
We have a policy they can't be out of the streets, but it's not a street.
Yeah, and, I mean, I think we look bigger picture, too. Like, a lot of these things, like, like, it's no different than a Rosewood or Woodbury. When you're in HOA, then there's rules that are in place, and you sign up for, and then the HOA is in place.
Well, they want, they want us to enforce the trash can at the curb, that we do, like, like, say, my trash can's out the street. If it's there for, you know, so many days, I can be, you know, ticked. Well, I think people are just leaving the trash cans on the edges of the alleys and not bringing them in like they would have since it's a street. But since it's not a street, I don't think we can enforce that, 'cause it doesn't apply to the curb.
You cannot, yeah. Uh, yeah, it's not the streets, so we don't have enforcement action there.
Either all or nothing, basically.
I guess I just wanna get some direction from the board, 'cause I know I will have some calls tomorrow, and I know if we discuss this tonight, and...
They're not gonna be happy.
Yeah, I know.
For sure. I, I've had discussion with them as well. They will not be happy, and, but I don't know what the, I, I don't see the city taking over those streets, because it's gonna have to, you're gonna have to dig up all those roads and start from scratch and rebuild them to the degree that they need to be rebuilt to. And so, that's gonna cost us a lot of money, and then the neighbors from then on, it's gonna be our responsibility, and they're not built for, they're narrow roads. They're not, it's like they're driveways.
Yeah.
Could you look at a solution, assuming you get the property rights conveyed to the city? Could you look at something like Neighborhood Improvement District for the purpose of that? To be assessed on the property, but, I mean?
Yes, you could. Then, yeah, you, you could do that. We would be issuing debt on behalf of the residents, um, and you have to have, for a Neighborhood Improvement District, you would have, we would have to have the votes of the property owners.
And that guy in California's not gonna vote to do it.
The majority of the property owners, and, and so, I, I guess, I've, yeah, I've never thought about that. That would be a creative solution to it. I don't know if we'd be able to get the, the support, because the majority stakeholder lives in California, and he's the one that's, um, not taking action on it, uh, right now, so.
We are doing the curbs here, correct? Are we doing the, do we decide if we're doing the, 'cause I know the entrances to the alleys are bad. But we couldn't really do anything with that, 'cause the alleys are fish, couldn't we?
Is that Front Street, too? We've been promised Front Street was gonna get redone for ten years now.
Talking, talking curbs.
I'm talking curbs, too. We don't have it.
We're talking, you're talking total reconstruction, Nancy.
We are, too.
If the, if the majority owners of those, out in California...
I mean, we could throw that to the HOA and say, "This is an option. If you guys can get this lined up."
What does that do from a debt service perspective to the city?
Yeah, we're issuing debt on, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's something we'd need to research, I'm sure. Because we would be, we'd be essentially loaning, uh, money to the property owners, um, for repayment through special assessment. Uh, a lot of Neighborhood Improvement Districts are funded by a third-party private developer, and they recoup the money through special assessments that flow through the city back to the property owner. So, I don't know if, I'm not sure, uh, I'd have to do some research on Neighborhood Improvement Districts or CIDs to see how that flows out of the work.
I mean, there have to be a lot of other things in place. I would assume paperwork wise before you go that route, but...
Yes, definitely.
So, what I'm hearing is, that's why I have, is that the city is not interested in just taking the alleys over and paying to have them rebuilt. But we're gonna look forward to see if there's possibly something we could do with an improvement district if we find out it's doable from our end, and if you all can get the proper support behind it on your end. But it would result in a special assessment on your properties.
It would essentially make the city the HOA, as far as the roads are, are considered. Um, it would transfer, instead of them sending their dues to the HOA, they would pay special assessments through the property taxes, which the renters are gonna be very interested in, because they wouldn't have to pay that. Um, I don't know if you'll be able to get the, the property owners.
I don't think the guy in California would be on board, you know.
We can do, definitely do some research into that.
Well, at least it's, you know, we're showing them we're not just, I thought, we're looking at some options. We're not just, you know, saying, "Hey, tough luck." We're trying to find a solution. All right.
Wish I had a better answer.
I know, and I, and I keep telling them, you know, I'm just like, "This is just something we've never ran now." I mean, something that doesn't come up, that, you know, just happens. Just like we had, somebody was trying to sell some property over there this past week, and there was a, a lien on there that went back to two owners ago or something, and it's, you know, it's just that unfortunately, there's not much we can do on our end. So, all right. Uh, that's all I have. Do, do not believe we have a need for an executive session, correct?
No, sir.
So, unless someone has something else for regular session?
We will, sir.